Ten, first thing on the agenda as always is roll call and determination of quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Wa.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Baker. Costello.
Here.
LaCroix.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Wyfembach.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Hadcock.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you'd please turn that off or turn it to the vibrate mode, we'd certainly appreciate it. And also, if you wish to speak to any issue on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms there to your left or right over on the media table. If you'd please fill that out with your name and also the item that you'd wish to talk about, and we'll make sure as we're working our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we recognize you. The other thing is if you do have an issue that you'd like to address the council that is not on the agenda, that will be taken up here just very shortly. That's what I'm looking for. Next thing as always is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And so if anyone would please rise for the invocation, Julie Norwood from Canyon Lake Church of God will be giving our invocation, and then we'll go straight into our pledge of allegiance, and I will be asking troop number 55 to come up and lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you have made. God, our part is just to rejoice and be glad in it. And Lord, as we assemble together in this place tonight, Lord God, your elected officials and your concerned citizens, Lord, help us to be mindful that this is your city, these are your people, Lord, and you have invested and trusted us with decisions, Lord God, and civil duties to lead them. And Lord, I just pray that this meeting would be in decency and in order and that your will would be accomplished. Bless those that are present and serving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And that is scout troop number 55, and the scout master is Linda Larson. Thank you for coming. Next thing as always is the adoption of the agenda. Chair would ask if there are any additional items that we need to add to the agenda. I do have a couple corrections we do need to make. The first is we do need to remove item number 76 and item number 77. It was a mistake to actually include those. The motion from the council was to actually continue this to the February 16th city council meeting, so we will be taking that up on the 16th. So we do need to remove that from the agenda. Also, change of recommendation on items 45 through 53 and 70 through 72 on the agenda. It states that we need to continue these items to the January 18th meeting. Of course, we already passed that date. That is supposed to actually read, continue those items to the February 16th city council meeting. And just a reminder, we will not be meeting on that Monday. It will be actually on Tuesday because of President's Day, so that is the 16th. With that, I also have a 68A, Alderman Lloyd LaCroix, would like to have discussion about the information meeting coming up. Any additional items? Please turn on your light. Any additional items? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Let's see. We need to approve the minutes for the January 9th, 2009 city council meeting. If I could have a motion, please. We have a motion and a second for approval. This is approving the council meetings for the January 19th, 2010 city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Let's see. We have no awards or recognitions tonight, so we will go straight into the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. I do believe that Mr. Frankenfeld has an item. I do not believe it's on the agenda. Just a reminder, we do time this parade. We do allow three minutes, and we have those lights up here. So, Mr. Frankenfeld, if you could come forward, identify yourself for the record, and then the floor will be yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Don Frankenfeld from here in Rapid City, and my topic is the bid, which I understand is not before you today, but I'm hoping you'll consider delaying action on the bid for a period of three months or so, so that it can be brought to a level that I think would make it appropriate for enacting. I am not a lawyer, as Mr. Green has found of pointing out, but I have attended some law school classes, and one of my professors there said that the difference between a lynching and a hanging is nothing more than due process. And putting it a little less gruesomely, I think what he was trying to say is it's important to do the right thing, and it's important to do it in the right way. And I have to say to the mayor and to the council that I feel much better about the process that has been proceeding here over the last few weeks. I still don't think that the proposed bid, tied as it is to the MSS or Main Street Square, is the right thing to do, or at least it's not ripe to do just yet. But in far, as far as doing it in the right way, Mr. Perdue and I, and I know others, I saw Mr. Wa, I think, talking to Mr. Sefner the other day, there's been a lot of discussion as there should be. And I feel that there has been an opportunity to be heard, an opportunity to make the points that I have felt were important, among them that the cap, the $3,000 cap that is in the current proposal is clearly unconstitutional. But regardless of what point of view I've tried to express, I think that I have been heard, listened to, had a real opportunity for discussion, and I particularly want to thank my own members of the council who I've talked to. Mr. Costello, I think, is leading an initiative that I'm excited about, and I'm glad to see him doing that. And Malcolm Chapman had a good conversation with us. He listened to what we had to say. He facilitated an opportunity to visit with Mr. Helen Brand. I don't think we solved every problem, but we did have a real good opportunity to visit and to work collaboratively. So, next week or next or the week after that, or whenever the thing is on the agenda, I'll probably be a little nastier than I am tonight, but I'm just very grateful to the council for the hard work that they've done and the conscientious attitude that they've struck on this very vital issue that everybody cares about. I don't think there's anyone involved in this issue who doesn't want to do the right thing, and I think now we're trying, at least, all of us, to do it in the right way. So, thank you.
Thank you. For just a point of clarification, the meeting is on February 22nd, which is a Monday night, 7:00, and that is the date that the council has actually set.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see. I do not have any additional speaker request forms during the general public comment period. Does anyone else in the audience wish to talk to any issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. We do have a presentation by Economic Development and our executive director, Ben Snow. Ben, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I have some...
Please.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and provide this report, which hopefully I can get through in less than three minutes. I doubt it. It'll probably be more like five. So, please bear with me. There's a lot of exciting things that are going on with the Economic Development Partnership, and through this support, both monetarily and goodwill-wise from the city of Rapid City, we're able to accomplish a lot of really good things. Coming around, there will be two documents. One's going to be sort of a cream-colored document, which we handed out at our annual meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago. It's going to look something like this in cream color. Many of you have already seen this, but I just wanted to highlight a few points. As we embark in the year 2010, we will be undertaking a strategic planning exercise, and the document you have is a simple one-page primer to prepare those involved in economic development in our community as to the many ways that they can get involved in making Rapid City a more attractive location and destination for businesses that are already here, as well as the many who are sniffing the ground, so to speak. I'm going to highlight, we have four working teams with the clever acronym of RAPID, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that's already taking place under these four teams. And the one that's going to kick off in the next couple of weeks is our promotion and marketing team. And there will be a new logo established for the Economic Development Partnership and a new branding campaign, which will be made manifest in its first phase with a new website. And then we'll have a lot of marketing collateral materials that will come and sort of feed off of that new brand and that new logo. I know a couple of you have expressed some interest in participating on that team, so I look forward to getting your input as we meet over the next couple of weeks. Also, since I've been here in Rapid for six months now, I've noticed a deficit in a tool that we don't have in place in Rapid City right now, and that is a good comprehensive master land and building inventory base, which, as you can imagine, is a very critical tool when we're talking to companies and they give us a specific requirement that they're looking for, whether it be in acreage or in square footage of retail, office, industrial, what have you. We don't really have a good comprehensive commercial real estate database. So, this year, the deal team is probably front and center is we want to put that together, is to, I've met with folks here at the city, as well as folks with the county Board of Equalization, to determine what's going to be the best method of getting that together. As it stands right now, Rapid City is a significant disadvantage because other communities of our size who have a good real estate database and a quick response team in place to provide prospects with what's available, they have an advantage over us right now because we have to simply cobble together the best that we can from the community here and present a report to those folks. So, hopefully by the end of this year, we will have that about 80% complete so that we can stand confidently when anyone calls or knocks on our door, and we can respond in a better way than our office has been able to previously. The third team is the investor team, and this one, there was a great turnout at our annual meeting that was held on January 13th. And I can't name names, but I can tell you just anecdotally that there have been a lot of companies who have approached me and have approached members of our board in a renewed enthusiasm and energy in getting involved in economic development in Rapid City. And I think that's good news for all of you. It's certainly good news for our organization to see that level of activity, that people who previously weren't engaged are now coming to the table and they want to play a role. So, that's exciting, and the investor team will be working on ways to create more events and some more excitement and get people together more often than we have in the past to specifically talk about economic development. And then the last point is the regional affairs team, and the core of the regional affairs team is to strengthen our relationship with our partners in government. Obviously, the city is our strongest and most valuable partner, so you're at the top of that stack. But you should also know that the relationship with the state, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, by most accounts, has never been better. In just the short six months that I have been here, we have worked on that relationship. It has already yielded some amazing fruits in that prospects that come in at the state level, who may be shopping different states, I feel like Rapid City has now got a good seat at that table so that we can talk about what we have to offer in conjunction with all of the other things that are available throughout the state of South Dakota. So, that's important. This relationship with GOED, as I said, has evolved over the last six months, and there's been at least a dozen companies who have directly come in through that conduit of the state Governor's Office. Many of them have already yielded fruit in terms of jobs that have been created here, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Another thing you can expect from us is more participation in what's called co-op trade shows, where the state has a presence at one of the targeted industry trade shows. And I've gone to the Medical Device and Manufacturing Show in October, and most recently, the Shot Shot in Las Vegas. We will continue to participate in those that we think make sense for Rapid City, where we feel like we've got a competitive advantage. Lastly, the other page that I passed around has been provided courtesy of Jim Meyerhouse, who's the CEO of the incubator, the Business Development Center. Most of you should have already received a copy of that directly from Jim, but I'm just providing that just in case. And there's a lot of activity happening over in that facility. If you haven't come over in a while, please come over and check it out. There's a lot of tenant improvements going on for some new companies that are moving into the incubator. You can see all the metrics on that sheet as to the number of companies and jobs that are currently, have been created with that facility. You should note that the foundation-owned land is down to its final 30 to 35 acres, so we will be looking for participation from the city on what the next purposing of the real estate foundation can be used for. We've already talked about a lot of potential projects, but you can look for that over the next six months as we wind down what's available from the foundation. And I've already had conversations with a couple of you regarding how we can get economic development projects that we all agree are high enough priority to qualify for 2012 for this next round. Hopefully, you'll continue to reach out to us in the business community for identifying those projects. Here's just some numbers I want to throw at you in closing. In the last six months, our office has visited with over 60 of the existing companies that we have in town. We've met with nearly every commercial real estate broker and developer in Rapid City, and we've had an opportunity to pitch Rapid to over 10 new prospect companies, many of which have resulted in follow-on-site visits and hosting events. And you should know that the industries that we have met with range anywhere from engineering and design firms to firearms, customer service centers, and light and heavy manufacturing. Just by way of update on a couple of employment numbers, ASI has begun their second round of hiring. Their first one went very well. They're now embarking on their second round of 40 employees, and their third and fourth rounds will happen over the next six to nine months. TDI Arms and Makota Industries are located at their building at the corner of Seeger and Dakota Craft Drives, and they've already hired 15 employees way ahead of their projections. They initially targeted 19. It's now looking like that number's going to be closer to 40 to 45 by the first two years. So, that's exciting, and that's a great, great victory. And then just in summary, if you think about the national economy and where Rapid City is positioned, this is a sweet spot for this corridor, the heartland of America right now, and I don't, I have nothing but optimism for what 2010 is going to offer us because as we start to recover from this recession sooner than the rest of the country, it presents a lot of opportunities for us to wave that flag so that the companies who are still bleeding and hurting in other parts of the country, who maybe hadn't considered South Dakota, maybe hadn't considered Rapid City, now's the perfect time to get on their radar screens. With that, I will take any questions from the council.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any lights. Whoops, I do too. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to ask you a question. My question, Ben, Mr. Snow, would be is, what are the challenges that you see from getting some of these businesses to locate to Rapid City?
In full candor.
Pardon?
In full candor, let me catch that, my response. I honestly believe that we have not done a good enough job in having Rapid City on the radar screen or on the maps of a lot of people in this country. They don't know where we are. They don't fully understand our proximity to Mount Rushmore. They don't understand Rapid City's connection to the Black Hills of South Dakota. I talked with a lot of people at both of these trade shows, and I'm just astounded and disappointed, but excited about the opportunity to have that happen. If you gave them a blank map of the United States, I don't think most people would be able to get Rapid City within 200 miles. So, I think that's the largest challenge right now.
Thank you. Just a little bit of a follow-up. Some of the people that you've visited with, obviously, some probably have chosen not to relocate here. I mean, is there specific reasons?
Yeah, and I think it's a follow-on to them not knowing who we are, the character of the Black Hills and the opportunities in Rapid City. A perfect example is there's a perception out there. Whenever people hear "South Dakota," they immediately think of Fargo, North Dakota, and they lump everybody, they lump the Dakotas all into the same broad-brush perception is that it's freezing, it's flat, it's ugly, and there's no reason I would want to be in anything called Dakota. So, I think the opportunity for us is to say, with all due respect to the rest of our comrades on the East River, we've got something very special here, and there's not enough people out there that know about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a request from the media. Please don't report that we called Fargo ugly. I don't want a phone call from their mayor.
You can pin it on me. I know those guys.
Any additional questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Snow.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we are on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 2 through 69 inclusive. 2 through 69 inclusive. Chair would look to open the public comment period for 2 through 53 inclusive, please.
Some motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on any items 2 through 53. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to any item 2 through 53 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
Some motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar. This is items 2 through 44. 2 through 44. Chair would ask if any of those items need to be removed. Marcia, there's a note here, 48. We'll be taking that up outside of this. So, I do have, I believe, item 41. Item number 41 from the city attorney's office. Any additional items need to be removed? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four, please.
Item number four. Very good. Any additional items to be removed from the consent calendar? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 21 and item number 28.
28. Got it? Very good. Any additional items? So far, we are dealing with the consent calendar 2 through 44, and we will be pulling item 4, 21, 28, and 41. Any additional items need to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2 through 44 inclusive, with the exception of item 4, 21, 28, and 41. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Let's see. We have a Public Works Committee item, item number four. Alderman Costello, could you please read that in, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is acknowledge the report from Front Porch Coalition, Stephanie Switzer-Dixon, Community Services Director, and I move to acknowledge your report.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge your reporting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first of all, I want to recognize Stephanie Switzer for all the work that she does. It's very important, especially in these times. But part of her request during the Public Works was to request that the mayor appoint up to two people to the Suicide Prevention Task Force, and I personally know of a couple council members who would be very interested in serving on that task force. So, is that something I need to amend them? Acknowledgement to request the mayor to point up to two people?
Jason, I think what he's looking for, probably the appropriate motion is to acknowledge your report and request the mayor bring back two names for appointments to the Suicide Prevention Task Force.
That sounds about perfect.
That's what I said.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, I thought you did. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number 21, and this is under legal and finance. Alderwoman Karen Gunderson Olsen, could you please read in item number 21, please?
Approved travel request for Deb Hagcock, Karen Gunderson Olsen, and Malcolm Chapman to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C., March 12th through the 18th in the approximate amount of $8,629.50. My motion is for approval. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure I'm up to speed on this particular request. Just three councils. I'm assuming these are going through our council leadership, so I guess I would pose this question to council leadership is, what does this entail and how, what will this do for the taxpayers of Rapid City, as it's about 25% of our total budget for the year?
Okay, did you want to direct that to someone specific?
I would say to Lloyd, to our council leadership.
Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroix.
Thank you, Mayor. Specifically, we've had council members bring back plenty of things from the National League of Cities. In fact, the bank on Rapid City was one of the things Deb Hagcock came back with on the last one she went with and is working hard with. There's going to be follow-up on that. Not only that, but our representation will be meeting with our congressional leaders in Washington, and I think that's very important. If you have, the mayor will come up with some things for discussion that council leadership will discuss with them. We can come up with that and distribute that to the rest of the council, but I think the Washington trip is a very important trip for some of our council members to attend, not only to represent Rapid City, but to discuss with our congressional leaders.
Thank you. Alderman Wyfembach, you have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a particularly important meeting, I believe, because it is an opportunity for the city of Rapid City to discuss needs and requirements and often federal mandates that come before our city that cost taxpayers money. And so, this opportunity to be with our congressional delegation, which is our two senators and our Congresswoman, these are important opportunities for us to identify the ways in which the city of Rapid City can benefit from various kinds of federal funding. And we all realize that some important money has come forward to the city for water source protection, an issue that's extremely important to the city of Rapid City. That, one of the key parts of that, putting together that is, that group of monies came about because of visits to, with our congressional delegation. And obviously, they returned to South Dakota, but there's a certain great impact that occurs when citizens make themselves known and a community is strongly represented at the Washington level. So, I see that as a, this is a particularly important meeting for our city to be well-represented at, and I think, so for that reason, I think it's very important.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? I see no lights. We will go to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes with one no from Alderman Ron Wyfembach. Thank you, everyone. Item number 28. And Karen, could you please also read that in?
Acknowledge your report on the local Board of Equalization schedule and to request council members to sign up for the hearings, and that form has been circulating, and it is, we certainly urge our, my colleagues to participate in the Board of Equalization. It is the opportunity to listen directly to those in the community who have concerns about the appropriateness and the fairness of the property taxes that they are, that they have been assigned. And so, this is an important thing for us to do because we are part of those who spend the money. I think there's been some discussion about whether or not the city's portion is appropriate, but frankly, I don't think that's a discussion we want to have tonight because there's that codified law. And so, we just urge our colleagues, and Mr. Preston may have something additionally he wishes to say about this.
Okay, can we have a motion, please? Motion should probably be to acknowledge the report on the local Board of Equalization. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding, and maybe, I thought we were going to have further discussion about this tonight, that there was a requirement for a quorum of the city council to be present at these, at these meetings, and looking at this list, the three people being gone from the council, and looking at where it's at here, doesn't allow that to happen until maybe like Friday, the 19th, the last day.
Typically, Alderman Wyfembach, typically what we do is we'll pass this around a number of times, and if we don't have all the slots filled, if you notice, my name is not on there. I actually have every single one of those dates actually blocked off in my calendar, and I can actually serve as a sixth person. And the other thing is, Kay Ripentrough of my office will start calling council people to try and fill out those additional dates.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, but I also understand that there was going to be some conversation about whether it took six people from the council or not, so I guess if that's the conclusion.
Sorry, let's go to Jason.
That's how it'd be.
Yeah, let's go to Jason Green, I think can probably answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor. The statute requires that the city council and a member of the school board meet on the fir, I believe it's the third Monday of March to conduct these hearings, and those hearings can be continued throughout that week. It must be done within that week. In order to form a quorum, you have to determine how many members are a part of each individual local Board of Equalization. In a case where you had multiple school boards, you could have multiple members of a school board, so the number could be fluid. In the case of Rapid City, we've only got the Rapid City School District, so the governing body in Rapid City is composed of eleven members, the alderman plus the mayor, one member of the school board, that's the number that you need to determine the quorum. So there's twelve members, so you have to have seven people there, one of them the school board member, means that six members of the council at a minimum have to be there. But I think it's important to note, even though the signup sheet attempts to get the minimum number, it's the obligation of the council as a whole to attend those hearings.
Okay, Alderman Wyffenbach, you still have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is to acknowledge your report, any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are on to item number forty-one, and Karen, could you please read that in?
Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign letter of confirmation of mutual agreement with Saint Joe Investment Group, LLC. My motion is for approval.
Can we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Jason Green, I think you're going to make sure that we acknowledge that is the revised version with the second signature, is that correct?
That's correct. The correct version is on the dais, the only change from what was linked is an addition of a signature space for the attestation by the finance officer. So if the motion maker could just clarify that the intent is to approve the version on the dais, I think that suffices.
My intent is to approve the version that we have in our, on the dais in our packets.
Okay.
That includes two signature blocks.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar, we're on to the continued consent items. These are items forty-five through fifty-three inclusive, forty-five through fifty-three inclusive, and the chair will just remind you that the date should read February sixteenth as far as the continuation date, not January eighteenth as per in the agenda. With that, chair would look, ask if any items need to be polled. Marcia, you're saying item number forty-eight needs to be polled? Any additional items, forty-five through fifty-three inclusive that need to be polled? Please turn on your light. Seeing none, the chair will look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, items forty-five through fifty-three inclusive, with the exception of item forty-eight.
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I heard someone talking about item forty-one, we've already dealt with that, so. That was Jim, is he confused down there? Okay. Oh, he's straight in Billow, okay. Okay, we are on to item number forty-eight. Karen, could you please read that in for us?
A request by fiscal and surveying and consulting engineers for Huey Clemens for a layout and preliminary plat on lots A and B of Clemens Edition, located a distance of seventy-two point nineteen feet more or less to the point of beginning, located at sixty-two ninety-nine East Highway forty-four. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, discussion on that motion? Marcia?
This item was inadvertently included on the continued calendar, and so we're asking for it to be approved, they'd met all the deadlines.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations of the layout and the preliminary plat, any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent items. We are on to the non-consent calendar, items fifty-four through sixty-nine. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items fifty-four through sixty-nine inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We do have a couple speaker request forms here, the first one is from Ken Adele on item number fifty-eight. Ken, if you want to go ahead and come on up, identify yourself, and as always, you'll have your three minutes.
Name's Ken Adele. Thank you, Mayor, and the council for the opportunity. I'm back on the ducks again, and the last meeting I was at, Karen was kind enough and gave me the management plan, that's good information, or that information that should have been put out nine months ago, we had nine months to put that out. I think a lot of people had understood what was going on, but after studying that, I'm still against ordinance, I think the only reason to have an ordinance is so that you can live via fine, but you don't plan on arresting anybody, it does not make any sense to me. And, you know, you're giving up, you're saying, don't feed, you want ordinance, that's permanent. That's saying you're never going to feed the ducks, you know, and it's a hometown value that you're voting away. People like to feed wildlife, and there is education benefit to doing that for youngsters. The waterfall management plan, I read that, it's a good plan, it's a start, but I don't know if it's all the answer. A lot of it is long-term, we're talking years. The hazing, you can get on the internet and you can read for days on hazing. Stuff that works, there's even one that says it's unlikely it will work. You really don't know, but I think this plan needs to be implemented, but I think you need to have a memorandum, or moratorium, rather, banning the feeding while the hazing is going on. That's the only time it really makes a difference. If a good hazing program is going to work, it don't matter if you're feeding them or not, but in all fairness to the group that put this all together, I think the community needs support this moratorium, put that onto this program, give them a tool to work with, and let the people understand this plan, and don't feed them while this hazing is going on. It don't make sense to scare the ducks and geese out one day, and the next day, someone feeding them. It's counterproductive, but in all fairness, that is one reason you need to do that. The second reason, if the plan don't work, and you don't have a ban, it's going to be the fall of the people, just like the problems, they're saying it's the fall of the people, now it isn't. But the, I think, I think before you pass ordinance saying it's making it permanent, you need to try this plan. You know, it's going to be a stretch to think this is going to work as easily as they say. I'd be surprised if it does. A lot of the studies you read about, they're small areas, smaller amount of geese. Canyon Lake is a big area, a lot of geese, they have a lot of alternate sites to go to, if you just, and if you've got to keep going back and chasing them with the dogs and the boats, you've already missed the point because the ducks are already there and the geese are there. When they leave, they leave their mess, and that's the whole problem. So I think you need to try this before you come up with an ordinance and say, no more feeding of the ducks, but I think you need a moratorium, give them a tool to work with. Whenever they implement this, put into effect the moratorium. The other thing we haven't talked about is the cost of funding the man hours of these programs. We haven't heard a lot, the public hasn't heard a lot about all this stuff that's going to go on with this. I think there's a lot of information, good information, that people would be interested in hearing, and just, I'll talk just a little bit about the cleanup. No matter what you do, you're going to have stuff to clean up off the sidewalk, you need to buy some equipment. We not only need it at Canyon Lake, we need it on the bike path, vacuum up glass and other things, you're going to need it at your multi-level parking ramps, need one next door. Who's going to clean that? What kind of machinery are you going to have? You're going to increase the downtown traffic? How are you going to clean that? You want a plaza, how are you going to clean it? I do understand there is a street sweeper that cleans the sidewalks downtown. I don't know what we're being told, if we can't use it, or what the problem is with it, but I don't know if we're getting all the facts in this case. Also, one interesting note, one of the city entities, they're cleaning up their area. The sidewalks are ten foot wide, they use a street sweeper, calling a street sweeper. They're clever enough to use the forklift to pick up their pressure washer and they clean the things off. Some areas are getting cleaned, but Canyon Lakes, it has to be cleaned every day. In Pierce, they clean it three times a day, and as this program progresses and shows improvement, the cleanup will be less, but don't pass ordinance making it permanent ever to do this. Add a moratorium to the plan, give them people something to work with, and educate the public, and I think they would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We also have a speaker request form from Max Witz, item number sixty-two.
My name is Max Witz, I am a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau, and tonight I just wanted to come and give you an update on where we are with the census and ask for your help. The census is coming up very quickly. Here in Rapid City, most people will receive their census form on or about March fifteenth. We are in a mail-out, mail-back area, so most people will receive their census forms in the mail. We want to ask people, encourage residents to complete their census forms as soon as possible and mail them back into us. It saves us money when people mail their forms back in. For every one percent of the U.S. population that doesn't return their census forms, it costs us eighty to ninety million dollars to go out and chase that information, so that's a lot of money that could be used in better ways than chasing down information. There are three things that we like to talk about with the census, it's safe, it's easy, and important. All of the information that we collect during the 2010 census is held strictly confidential under Title thirteen of the U.S. Code. All of your personally identifiable information that you put on your census forms will not be disclosed to anyone. We don't share that information with law enforcement, we don't share it with other federal agencies, not even the President of the United States can get your personally identifiable information. Census employees take an oath for life that we won't disclose that information, so we take that confidentiality very seriously. This time, the census will be easier than ever. It's only ten questions long, and it takes about ten minutes for the average household to complete. We ask age, name, gender, race, ethnicity, relationship, and whether you own or rent your home. Those are the, those are the basic questions that we need to have answered. It's about ten questions, takes about ten minutes to define who we are as a community and as a state and nation for the next ten years. The census, the 2010 census, the decennial, is the baseline for the next ten years. Those are the numbers that go into, a lot of federal programs are based off of highway funding, programs for the elderly and for children, are all based on census data. There's a lot of important reasons why we need to make sure that we're getting a complete and accurate count of the residents of Rapid City. Government leaders like yourselves use those numbers on a daily basis to make important decisions for your community. The census numbers are also used to draw boundaries, so we need to make sure that we have an accurate picture of what's in our community so that you can make those important decisions for the community. Your participation in the 2010 census is required by law. Every resident is required, under the Constitution, to complete their census questionnaire and return it to us. This time, with the ten questions, we're hoping that it will make it easier for people to send that back in. The long-form questionnaire that some of you might have gotten in two thousand has been replaced by the American Community Survey, which is an ongoing survey. This time, we ask those ten questions because that's the basic information that we need for that headcount that will last the next ten years. We count everyone who spends a majority of their time here. People, college kids, snowbirds, anyone who is living here, a majority of their year should be counted here in Rapid City, and the census equals, the numbers equal dollars, and it's important for our community that we not leave any of those dollars on the table. The census is about power and money, and so we want to make sure that Rapid City is getting its fair share. This past Friday, we had a complete count committee meeting here in the City School Administration Center. Members from the community, from our Rotary Club, from different organizations in the community came together, along with Barb Garcia and Monica Heller from the city, have been involved in that. This committee is a group of residents, of concerned people, who will work to spread the message, a positive message, about the census and why it's important, and we will continue to work in that fashion and make sure that we are getting that word out, especially to our hard-to-count populations. We have a fair number of hard-to-count populations in our community, and we want to make sure that we aren't continuing to undercount those populations, but we're getting every single person counted because it is so important. Your participation, we would love to have the council represented on the complete count committee, and anything that you can do to help us spread the word about the census, we certainly would appreciate it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Max. We also have a speaker request form from Jennifer, and I'm going to apologize, I can't quite make out your last name, Jennifer, so why don't you go ahead, if you'd come forward, and if you could please identify yourself for the record.
Jennifer Giroux.
Thank you.
And I just started, right? Three minutes, okay.
I'm sorry, they were asking what, she has item number sixty-seven. And with that, Jennifer, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, so I, there has been, what do you call, stormwater, what do you call this, Marcia? Stormwater, wetland reroute. So the Heartland Court, this road is being rerouted to allow for stormwater to collect there and some wetlands to be built, and the reroute is cutting through the park, and where it cuts through is, to my knowledge, the very last place along the parkway where the turkey vultures migrate in every April and leave every October, and I would just like to have a little more discussion about that before we put that road right in there. There's lots of options where you could ask that the construction occurs before April or after October, or you wait until the birds fly away for the day and quit before they come back at night, because us that live over there in that area, we absolutely love those turkey vultures. You can, people stop, they have, they're literally set up picnics there, the kids come and collect feathers, and I'm afraid that if you just go in there and do that construction, not paying any respect to where these turkey vultures live, that we will scare them away and they won't come back, and so that's basically what I wanted to say, I don't think there's anything else. I've tried to get ahead of this process, or at least get involved in this process, so there could be some discussion, and I haven't figured out the system quick enough to do it, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. I do not have any further speaker request forms, and there again, we are dealing with items fifty-four through sixty-nine. Do not have any additional speaker request forms. So with that, chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period, items, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to close the public comment period, and this is on items fifty-four through sixty-nine inclusive. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to ordinances, item number fifty-four. Karen, if you would, please.
An ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, resoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district on property located at twenty-eight oh-nine Cactus Drive. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance fifty-five seventy-six. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval, seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Fifty-five, please.
First reading ordinance fifty-five seventy-seven, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district on property located at twenty-eight oh-four Cactus Drive. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-six, please.
First reading of ordinance fifty-five seventy-eight, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district on property located at twenty-eight oh-two East Fairmont Street. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance fifty-five seventy-eight. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-seven, please.
First reading ordinance fifty-five seventy-nine, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district on property located at twenty-eight oh-six Cactus Drive. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance fifty-five seventy-nine. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-eight, please.
Second reading ordinance fifty-five oh-one, an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of wild Second reading, ordinance 5501, an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of wildlife and waterfall in the City of Rapid City by establishing Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Just a point of clarification, we do want to make sure that the motion on the floor is with the $5 fee. And you... The council had amended that motion last time, and then once it was amended, they forwarded it to this meeting. So the version that we're talking about has already been amended to include the $5. Correct, Jason? I want to just make sure.
That's correct, and that's the motion that I'm presenting.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a question for Jason first. If we took the fee out for feeding the ducks, could we make this a resolution and do everything that we've done in the ordinance with the fine just coming out of that ordinance? Because if I'm correct, the fine being in the ordinance makes it so we have to do the fine.
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you take out all of the language that's in this ordinance about the fine, what will happen is that the general penalty provision of the Rapid City Municipal Code will become effective, and that would include a fine of up to $500. If you defeated the ordinance and brought everything back in the form of a resolution minus the fine language, you would have a statement by the City Council that would be unenforceable in court. So it would really be ineffective to accomplish what the ordinance wants to do, but it would be a statement by the council. And that would be something that's within the authority of the council to do.
Okay. Deb, you start the floor, ma'am.
So being unenforceable, meaning unenforceable because we wouldn't be able to do a fine on feeding?
Jason?
I don't think you'd be able to do much of anything about it.
To me, reading through the ordinance, it seems like everything I'm with Ken Adell made sense except for the fine for feeding. I looked at this, and it does have good information. There is a good plan in effect, but I think the only plan that I have a problem with would be the fine for feeding the ducks. It seems like you could do everything in the ordinance as a... Or take the ordinance and put it into a resolution, try the plan for about a year, and then if it doesn't work without fining people, you could bring it back as an ordinance, fining it, putting your $5 fine in. To me, it sounds like a better plan than just starting out by giving people $5 fines, the taxpayers. And again, the taxpayers are one that paid for the lake, put in the habitat, based on our recommendation, and I think we ought to give them the benefit of the doubt of trying something without fining them right away and basing it on the plan, which is a feeding ban. So again, Jason, if I put this as a resolution, it's not going to do anything... I can't put everything that's in that ordinance, take out the fine, and make it effective as a resolution.
Go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
As a resolution, it would merely be a statement by the council, who would have no... You'd have no ability to enforce it.
Okay. I guess my ability to enforce it would be the fine, and in this case, that would be my substitute motion, is to make this a resolution without the fine.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second, and that would be to direct staff to prepare a resolution to include the language that is in the proposed ordinance with the exception of the fine. Is that... Jason, is that how you're reading that also? Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're dealing with a substitute motion only. Deb, did you have any other follow-up? Okay. Discussion on the substitute motion only, please. Let's go to... Karen, did you want to talk about the substitute motion?
I'll make just one comment. I think it doesn't give us the tool we really need as we move forward. I heard Ken talking about a moratorium, which essentially he's saying is there would be a period of time when there wouldn't be any feeding, and this is actually what we're talking about doing. And I think that's an important piece. My colleagues recognize that this is, even as Mr. Adell acknowledged, the plan is really like a puzzle. There are a number of issues, and they are solved in various ways by different parts of the management plan. And all of the things coming together are going to put us in a better position in terms of the safety and well-being of our parks. I was just noticing the other day that they say that a goose defecates 28 times a day, which means that's a lot of fecal matter in wherever they are, and that's a problem. That's a safety issue. My worst nightmare in this whole discussion, as we've gone through this discussion about the waterfall management, is at some point in time having a serious avian disease occur, either dead ducks or geese, or in the park, or even possibly the potential of having this affect our population. No one wants a health situation to arise out of this. And so I'm not in favor of the motion to create a resolution because I don't think it gives us the tool that we need to really begin putting in place this plan for managing waterfall. It is a multi-sided plan that includes approaches for various waterfall. The needs... The aversion plan for ducks is quite different from geese, so I would urge my colleagues not to be in support of the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. I noticed that the State Games and Parks Department will not issue permits, and that there's some sort of feeding on the ban. Would they still allow those permits versus a resolution versus an ordinance?
Let's ask Jason Green. Can you answer that, Jason?
My understanding, based on the comments that the game fish and parks representatives made previously, is that a resolution would be insufficient. It's possible they would reconsider, but my understanding today is no.
So we can reduce the waterfall under a resolution at all?
Jason?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Anything else, Patty? Okay, very good. The motion on the floor is a substitute motion. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, please.
Martenson? Quaker? Costello?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
Chapman? Olson?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Wa?
No.
Four yes, or yeah, four yes, six no.
Okay, so the motion fails on a four to six vote. We're back to the original motion. Further discussion on the original motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I originally came here tonight to not comment on this thing because it's been discussed so many times over and over, but I hear new information tonight that I asked on several times. I have not yet heard from the game fish and parks that they required this ban, that a resolution wouldn't be sufficient. That's new news to me tonight. I think that question's been asked in the past. But, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the chief.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to understand if Mr. Hallander, the chief, had a plan in place to enforce this ordinance and what it would be.
Chief Hallander.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular ordinance, I think, is like any other ordinance. We need a period where we can evaluate how compliance is going to be achieved. Initially, a number of people, an unknown percentage of the people, will comply with the ordinance because it exists. Some of the folks may comply because they don't want to get caught violating it. But this ordinance will do... There's more to enforcing this ordinance than writing a ticket. As we've heard, this will allow the game fish and parks to issue a permit to take action with the ducks. In addition to that, it will allow for the proper signage, it will allow for a number of other tactics to gain compliance. And we'll be evaluating during that time to see if the problem is being resolved, or if we need to resort to writing tickets for this particular fence. We're certainly willing to write tickets for this, but it all has to come together as a big package rather than making that our sole tactic for gaining compliance, because that will be ultimately unsuccessful, in my opinion.
Alderman Wyffenbach, you start.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, because I've heard from the dais here that we have no intention of enforcing this ordinance, even though we have a plan on passing it. So I just wanted to make clear that what our intentions really are. If they are to pass an ordinance just that we're not going to enforce, or if we're going to enforce an ordinance, a resolution seems sufficient to me. We're creating more ordinances on the book that I have a feeling that's not going to be actually enforced to any level. I think that the educational process and the processes of the signages and the harassment of the ducks and those types of things, maybe some limited feeding would be sufficient and suffice the overall problem, still allow the tradition of Rapid City and feeding the ducks to continue to a limited capacity. Ducks and geese are a problem throughout the nation, not just here in Rapid City. It's an ongoing problem, in difference to how much they're fed at the park or wherever they're fed anyway, so thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I know I'm probably not going to win this. In fact, I know I'm not by the votes, but I guess I went online and read about managing waterfall, not only in South Dakota but around the United States. And I didn't find too many people not getting permits with having a fine put in place in order for them to get their permit. So I'm trying to figure out why it's just Rapid City. That was never answered. It was asked the question off the dais to try to get that answer, and we, three of us at least, were willing to meet with the game fish and parks in order to do a negotiation or something and ask these questions. Never happened. I think that was not finding solution to figuring out this plan and what was going to happen. I believe with the education, putting up the signs and mitigation, just like we were saying with the resolution, it would have worked. And again, you could have put a moratorium or something else over the top of it. Self-safety and well-being of the parks, I still believe, like in Pier, clean up your own backyard before you come into ours. I don't know if anybody's seen Pier, but it's coated by the Capitol with ducks and feces all over. We just heard it's cleaned up three times a day, and it's still not getting taken care of. Now, we're going to come into Rapid City and put fines on people for feeding the ducks. There's something wrong with this. Again, managing waterfall in South Dakota, we do it different in Rapid City than we do the rest of South Dakota, and we can't find resolution or solution, and we can't even get these people to come to the table and talk with us. I don't know. I'm disappointed in this. Again, I don't think that we should put ordinances in place and put it on the backs of the taxpayers, putting fines on them for something we created ourselves. So again, I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, or I'm sorry, Ron Kroger, who has not had the opportunity to speak on this issue. And now, come back to Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just reading the report again. And when we had game fish and parks here, to me, they indicated that the requirement to get a migratory bird permit or whatever they need to get, one of the requirements not necessarily was that we have a feeding ban, but that was their wish that we enforce a feeding ban. So, you know, what I would... If we would have requested them to permit... To send in for that permit without the bird feeding ban, we would have had an answer back from them already to let us know if they could do this with or without the ban. And I believe they can do it without the ban. And it's kind of remarkable that within the last few weeks, I mean, there was in the news media, State Game Fish is looking at the issue statewide of birds not migrating, and they're staying year-round in South Dakota, and it's creating a problem not only in Rapid City but the whole state. And to say that they're going to require any area of South Dakota to not feed the geese to help get rid of them, I think is... It's not going to happen. So I don't know why we cannot request game fish and parks to submit the plan without the feeding ban. If they come back with... If they come back and say that they will not allow the state or Rapid City to implement the migrating... Or the mitigation plan that we have, you know, that's a completely different issue. But today, we've never asked them to submit that plan, we've never got an answer. And I wish we would do that before we kill this thing. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. We could have had an answer months ago, and we... Today, we're still fighting about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
In my discussion with folks from game fish and parks, this is an issue they have to take to the US Fish and Wildlife Service to receive these permits. And along with it has to come a plan, because what we're talking about is euthanizing migratory birds, chiefly geese. And that cooperative relationship between ourselves, the City of Rapid City, and game fish and parks is important because they're the experts as to how we go about that. In addition to that, I think it's important to understand that, right now, across the state of South Dakota, there are 15 permits issued to game fish and parks for geese who are involved in depredation, which means they are eating someone's crop. Game fish and parks does go in and do mitigation for those farmers who are having damage from their crops. That's an important issue. If you're a farmer, that's your livelihood. So it's important to mitigate. But they make it very clear that if that farmer's also feeding geese, on the other hand, in any form, other than their crop, that's not a permit that will be issued. So I think it's important that we take this dual step in moving forward, an important issue for our community. So I certainly urge my colleagues to support this.
Very good. Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval of second reading, and we're dealing, of course, with ordinance 5501. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Quaker? Costello?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Hadcock?
No.
Wa?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Six yes, four no.
Okay. Motion passes on a six to four vote. Thank you, everyone. I know this has been a long, drawn-out issue, but there's nothing wrong with good, healthy debate. Item number 59, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 5570, an ordinance amending conditional uses within the general commercial zoning district by amending Section 17.18.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. My motion is for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, second reading of ordinance 5570. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 60, please.
Second reading, ordinance number 5573, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number one for 2010. My motion is for approval.
Motion was made for approval and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Same? Motion carries.
Item number 61, second reading, ordinance number 5574, an ordinance to allow the City Council to determine the composition of the citizens committees required by the 2012 program by amending subsection 3.16.020, some paragraph E of the Rapid City Municipal Code. My motion is for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of second reading of ordinance 5574, item number 61. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 62, please.
Acknowledged report on the US Census and request a further report from the representative at tonight's meeting. So I think what we're doing is acknowledging the report and urging our community to do everything that they can to support the completeness of the 2010 census. And that would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-three, please.
A request from Dakota Conference of the United Methodist Church for free parking during the bishop's laity gathering to be held February twelfth through thirteenth, 2010. My motion is for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wish the record to reflect that I will be abstaining on this item as I am an employee of First United Methodist Church.
Thank you. We'll so note. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification on the motion. Since the parking regulations are enacted by ordinance, it's inappropriate to grant an exception by resolution. If I understand the intent of the motion, it is to direct that no enforcement of the parking regulations occur in the areas requested during the times requested. Is that an accurate statement?
Karen?
That would be my motion.
Okay. Discussion with that clarification. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Waifinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This same scenario came up during the DALL meetings and requested at that time that there be some sort of, you know, something moving forward that we can all live by. And I don't know that that's happened, and I would be willing to, and I guess I'll make the motion that they get the same treatment that the DALL got. I'm not sure how I would put that into a motion, but...
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
I would recommend the motion be to deny the request. If that's the intent, then whether or not the individual group chooses to feed the meters is up to them. And that was a decision that the group using the DALL made.
Thank you, Jason. I just want to be consistent in my approach on this and understanding that everybody be treated equally downtown that has meters, and so I guess I'd make a motion to deny this item.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the, we're with the original motion. Alderman Waifinbach, do you still want the floor, sir?
Oh, thank you, no.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I agree with my colleague, Mr. Waifinbach, that this is a complex issue. The most important part of this issue is that every, all of the fees we receive for parking goes into our parking area fund, which pays for our parking structure. So we are not, so that it's important that that revenue stream be in place. But I also recognize that the churches have been located in downtown for, I would guess, over a hundred years. And the parking has grown out to them. And I certainly don't want those churches to feel like they're not welcome in the downtown. And so I understand Mr. Waifinbach's concerns, and we certainly discussed that in regard to a number of organizations that operate in the downtown. I will be in support of this. I recognize that as we move forward with our parking plan, we're going to need to solve this particular issue for the large organizations who exist downtown and have parking needs, especially one or two occasion kinds of parking needs. And I think with care and discussion, I think we can bring some kind of a resolution to that that still allows these events to occur in the future. For the time being, I would suggest to my colleagues that this needs to be forwarded to the parking committee for further discussion and potentially some solution.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Alderman Aaron Costello, who has not had the opportunity to speak on this issue, and then we'll come back to Alderman Ron Waifinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding, one, the geography of the area. Okay, so is this area metered? Are there actually parking meters? JJ, I see JJ nodding, yes. Okay. What is the, the, the normal enforcement hours of those parking meters on Friday and Saturday?
Can anybody answer that?
JJ, or Jason, if you...
I think the answer is, I may be off within half an hour, eight to five.
And that includes Saturday, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. The only day that is not enforced is on Sundays.
Sunday, okay, that's where my confusion lies. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet, and then, there again, my apologies. We'll come back to Mr. Waifinbach.
So is this an ordinance that we enforce? Kind of like those ducks?
Is that a question for Mr. Green?
Jason?
Mr. Green?
Yes, the parking regulations are adopted by ordinance.
Okay, and there's fines on there?
The answer is yes.
And we're going to do what with this ordinance? Ignore this fine on this ordinance? Okay, I guess that was our point about the ducks. Same issue here. Not that I don't want to help the churches and do the right thing, but you just, there's your point with doing the same thing. We make ordinances, maybe they should be resolutions if we're not going to do the enforcement and make those enforcements for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Waifinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make, I want to make it sure that the audience doesn't think that I have some sort of vendetta against a church wanting to have a, have an extracurricular activity at their church and provide, I mean, that's inappropriate or out of context in any way, shape or form. I just request that the council treat everyone fairly. Look at it from a fair perspective. Look at it from what's good for one downtown person is good for another downtown person. We have houses that, and we want to talk about growing parking. We have houses downtown that have parking meters in front of them. I mean, and I mean, this is just crazy that we're not being fair and consistent. That's all I ask. That's exactly why I'm voting against it. As I said at the legal and finance, I want to encourage these types of things, but I want to find resolutions. We just keep putting Band-Aids on things. We make ordinances we don't enforce. We do these types of things inconsistently. If we want to change this process, if we want to change this thing, we've had plenty of opportunity to do that. And legal and finance, there was a request made to bring forward some sort of resolution that didn't involve this. And I don't see it anywhere. That's what we're being consistent in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for basically approval of the request. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion on the floor. I made the motion at legal and finance that we send this to council without recommendation and give Alderman Wa a chance to come to the legal and finance committee in some form with some idea of how to maybe get this done. I support as much as possible, being fair. I don't know what that term really means, because if we vote on issues up here, and someone's going to walk out of here tonight saying that we voted the right way, and to them it's fair, to those that we didn't vote the right way on, it's not fair. So I don't know the fairness. I think the fairness is in the process. And I think the process has said in both instances that this issue of how we treat people downtown needs to, other resolution to it. And whenever we convene the conversation about downtown parking again, I would suspect that this issue of how we waive parking fees for a certain period of time, I would imagine that that would be part of that discussion. I will say that I think that this is a little different than the DALL in that it wasn't necessarily the DALL who was requesting some, and they weren't requesting a relief of parking. They were willing to pay for it initially, and it was the hospital. The churches are downtown entities. Those that come into downtown to use the facilities are different. That's what the hospital did in holding a strategic planning at the DALL. They were an entity that came into the downtown and not necessarily are housed in the downtown. I think that's a, that's a different scenario altogether. I support the issue on the floor. I support the motion on the floor, I should say. And I also support Alderman Wa's statement that he sent out to the legal and finance committee looking at maybe some long-term resolution of this, that that be included in the conversation whenever we convene that long-term discussion of parking.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
In all seriousness, the process, I think, there is a good process, but there needs to be, like any ordinance or anything that we do do, there's always can be some solution in it. And that's my point with the last one and this one. My issue with this, in a sense, is we do like to help people out and try to find solution for the parking. But through the nonprofits or non-for-profit organizations, I don't know if anybody's been down there and counted them down in the downtown district. There's many. So that's my worry is if we're going to start this precedent, we're going to have to keep it up. You can't do it for one entity or one nonprofit and not do it for the rest. So, again, if you count how many nonprofits, I can tell you there's about four or five on my block on Quincy. So that's many businesses on Quincy also that will be blocked if we're going to do this. I understand as well that not every one of those are going to have things that they're, that are going on at the same time. And there can be solution with this, but I think it's going to be, just like the parking issue, a very hard thing to try to keep up and not set some type of precedent for all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to instruct that no parking enforcement on February twelfth and thirteenth be enforced on areas of Kansas City Street, Sixth and Seventh Street. Jason, is that the appropriate motion? Okay. Further discussion? Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with two no's from Alderwoman Deb Hadcock and Alderman Ron Waifinbach. And Alderman Bill Wa abstaining. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number sixty-four, please.
Item number sixty-four is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the city of Rapid City and Red Rock Development LLC for reimbursement of sewer construction fees for Red Rock Estates Lift Station, project number SS one dash one zero eight six, and I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining on this one also and on number sixty-five, as I am an employee of Red Rock. Thank you.
Very good. We shall note that. Any further discussion? Motion is for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes with Alderman Bill Wa abstaining. Item number sixty-five, please.
Item number sixty-five is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign construction fee resolution for Red Rock Estates Sanitary Sewer Lift Station, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes with Alderman Bill Wa abstaining. Item number sixty-six, please.
Item number sixty-six is approved with stipulations requested by Ferber Engineering Company Incorporated for South Dakota Game Fish and Parks to consider application for vacation of a sanitary sewer easement on twenty-foot sanitary sewer easement located in an area generally described as being southwest of the intersection of Knutson Lane and Sturgis Road, and I move for approval with stipulations.
Can we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second on item number sixty-six to approve with stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we add a stipulation on there that the requirement to not feed and feed the ducks and geese be removed from a prior ordinance?
We'll call that one cute, but out of order.
It was a question, but, okay.
Thank you. Let's go to Marcia. Any change? The motion on the floor is the recommended motion. Motion on the floor is for approval stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number sixty-seven, Mr. Preston, the bid list. I'm sorry, the bid list.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items on the bid list tonight. First one is the Heartland Court relocation project. We received five bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting bid from Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated in an amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, twenty dollars and ten cents.
Can we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc. for a grand total of two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, twenty dollars and ten cents. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, but it is in relationship to the questions asked by one of our constituents in the audience. Is this the appropriate time?
You can certainly ask the question. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would guess, my question would be for Robert. I feel certain, I'm pretty sure this work is going to be done early in the season. And so I think Jennifer's concerns for the roosting turkey vultures, which I am aware, I watch them sometimes too, won't be disturbed. So, Robert, do you have an answer to that?
Robert, do you have somewhat of a timeline?
Yes, the completion date that's set for this project is June eleventh of 2010. There is significant amount of work that's being done with this project. I think shortening that up any tighter would be too difficult to do. Looking at moving it back later in the year beyond October, there just isn't enough time in the year when you have conditions where the ground isn't frozen where you can do this type of work. So the completion date that's set now is June eleventh of 2010.
My observation, as someone who does have turkey vultures, I mean, they roost near my house, too. I would say that this will probably not be a project that disturbs them, because I think it is happening soon enough. And so that would be my, that would be my observation about the concerns.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to thank Ms. Drew for coming forward on this. Earlier, I was asked whether or not the trees that the buzzards roost in would be, would stay, and I was assured that they will. And I'd just like to take this time to encourage anyone who hasn't seen this occurrence, you know, take a summer evening and go out there and check it out. It is just, it is so fascinating to see almost countless number of gigantic birds come in and just very gently roost in these trees, so, all right.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm sorry, ma'am, at this point, we actually had the public hearing, so unless there's a specific question to you, this isn't the opportunity anymore. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Jennifer.
Okay, state your question, please.
What?
Well, Malcolm, please ask a specific question.
Can I just say when they migrate in and when they take off in the morning?
Why don't you ask your question, please? When do they take off in the morning?
Jennifer, would you like to ask us a question?
These birds are incredibly shy-bird, and they're very heavy. And so until the sun comes down and heats up the thermals, they can't take off in the morning. So usually they don't fly off until about nine o'clock in the morning, and if it's a cold day, it's later than that, but usually by nine. They come in every April, just like clockwork, and they leave every October, just like clockwork. And the reason I say that is if people walk next to my, I tried to donate these trees to the park to protect these birds, and they didn't want them because of the liability of the big cotton.
Can I ask you if you could?
Okay, so if a person walks by them and startles them, they take off. So we're putting a road right in front of them, and then we're putting construction. I don't think the road will scare them. There's only four houses back there, living. I think the construction will scare them out from April to June. And so what I'm saying is if you can't decrease it till June, then at least ask those construction people to wait until they take off in the morning.
Okay.
They'll be gone before the day's over.
Jennifer, I'm sorry. Malcolm, additional questions? Okay. Very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Preston?
The next item is well number thirteen, raw water meter installation project. We received five bids. Staff is recommending we reject all bids as staff will consider some other alternatives to accomplish this.
We have a motion and a second to reject all bids. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, that does get us through the bids. We are on to item number sixty-eight A, which was Alderman LaCroy and discussion about the information meeting. Mr. LaCroy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a request from the council to, I'd like to move the information, March informational meeting from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth. Number one, during the, during that week, I think we have the Board of Equalizations, if I'm right. And number two, we have the mayor's task force for strengthening families. The subcommittee of the Youth Engagement Committee has a consultant coming in town to visit with community groups and organizations. And they would like to, they've done a survey in our community with, along with the school, the American Promise Survey, and he's going to have the results for that. And so what our, our plan is, is to have an informational meeting on the twenty-fourth. And it'll be an update of the mayor's strengthening families task force, the first annual. That evening, we'll have at the Civic Center, an extended one for the civic groups to come down, and it'll be update on everything that we're doing from all the committees. And so at this time, I'd just like to request that we move it from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move it from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth. And just for point of clarification, typically on Wednesdays, we do have legal and finance because... point of clarification, typically on Wednesdays, we do have legal and finance because we have five Mondays in March, we would not be having a legal and finance meeting, so that does give some flexibility there. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion on the floor to move it. I think it's important. The work that the task force and all the subcommittees are doing in our community, I'm not sure if enough people realize how much work is being done. And one of the committees right now is in line for funding to the tune of about $1 million to impact mental behaviors and prevention in our community. I think it's important. Unfortunately, I will not be here on the 24th, but I support the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to move the information meeting from the 17th to the 24th. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, we did not have anything under Mayor's items or Council items or liaison reports, so we are at the staff items, item number 69, which is a 2012 update. Let's go to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
There are no updates to report this month for Vision 2012. There's no changes to the plan.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is about the current 2012 plan that we're in, but if I could have a little latitude to speak about the next round of 2012. We're currently accepting applications, citizen applications to vet those projects for the three citizen groups that are created. And applications aren't coming in as quickly as we thought that they would come in for this round. I know people and entities are working on proposals for the actual 2012 programs and, and process itself, but not the citizen groups. Those applications aren't coming in. A recommendation to the council, the deadline for those applications is actually the 5th of February, which is Friday.
5th of March?
No, the 5th of February for the citizen groups is the 5th of February. The 5th of March is for the proposals for programs. I would just recommend that we move the entire process back a month, so make those applications due on the 5th of March, and then the other applications do the 5th of April, and then just move everything back a month. I know that would take some more looking at. So, in addition to asking that we move the process back a month, I would ask that we send this to legal and finance to have further discussion. I'll just say, since this is televised, I just think that this is a tremendous opportunity for people in our community to get involved with how to disperse, invest roughly $50 million, $40 to $50 million in our community over a five-year period of time. So, I hope that people come and participate in the process, and I would encourage the council to do whatever we can to encourage citizens in our community to get involved in the process. Long-winded motion, but to move the process back a month, and then send this item to legal and finance as well.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second to acknowledge and the report, and to also send the discussion back to legal and finance as outlined by Alderman Malcolm Chapman. With that, further discussion, Alderman Sam Quaker.
I'd like to echo what was said earlier, and I also wanted to encourage people to apply for these positions on these committees. I was part of the selection process for the committee assignments four or five years ago, and I will say that having been part of that process and then being on a member of the council during the process, I really, I noticed that there was a lot of latitude given to the work of these committees, and the work that they do is very important. And for the, for the most part, those recommendations were accepted by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report and to send an item back to legal and finance for discussion as far as deadlines. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the public hearing items. These are items 70 through 84, 70 through 84. Chair would look for a motion to open the public hearing on items 70 through 84 inclusive, with the exception of item number 78. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let me just clarify, item number 78 is the public hearing for fish sanitation, and our legal staff is suggesting that we actually open up a public hearing individually for that one item, so we'll be dealing with that separately. Okay, let's see. I do not have any speak request forms for items 70 through 84 inclusive. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to any item 70 through 84 inclusive? If not, we will move on. Please keep in mind that we do leave the public hearing open during this period. Now, Jason, just curiosity, if we leave the public open as we get to item 78, we would basically have a public hearing within a public hearing. So, how do you want to handle this?
The, the continued hearing consent calendar, I believe, only goes through...
You're right, through 75.
So, you will have completed that portion, and you'll be able to open a separate hearing at that time.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we're doing all right. Okay. We are on to the continued public hearing consent items. These are items 70 through 73. Chair would ask if any items 70 through 73 inclusive need to be pulled. Just a reminder, as we talked about the very beginning of the meeting, the continued date should be February 16th, and that was part of adopting the agenda. Any items need to be pulled? Marcia? We're good to go. Chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 70 through 73, to the February 16th council meeting. And I'm sorry, that was 71, 70, 71, 72 to the 16th, and then item number 73 is to the July 6th, 2010. I just want to make sure everyone's clear on the motion. Okay? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing consent items. Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearings on items 70 through 84 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent public hearing items, items 70 and 75. Marcia, do we need to pull either one? Very good. How about from the, from the council? Seeing none. Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 74 and 75. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items 76 through 84 inclusive. Just a reminder, we did remove items number 76 and number 77 from the agenda. Those were actually scheduled to be heard in two weeks. So, that means we're on to item number 78. And Karen, if you'd please read that in for us. Let's go ahead and read it in, and then we'll open the public hearing. Go ahead and read that in if you would.
Public, the public hearing on the Fish Garbage Services. Jason, what should be the motion now?
Open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. My motion would be to open the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Jason, do you have anything to add? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I do not have any speak request forms on item number 78. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to item number 78? Seeing none, chair would look for a motion to close. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make the council aware that I have again received a request from council for Fish Garbage Service for continuance of this hearing. At this point, they're requesting an indefinite continuance due to the pending criminal investigation. It's my opinion that these are separate matters. This matter's been pending before the council now for more than 40 days. You've made several changes in the scheduled hearing to accommodate requests from Fish. I think it's time to put this matter to rest. So, my advice is conduct the public hearing today, and then, once that's completed, then you would make a motion to either grant the appeal and approve their license, or affirm the denial of the license to Fish.
Very good. Thank you. Let's see, do we have a motion on the floor, Amber, to close public hearing? Okay. Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Wyffenbach, did you want to talk to that, or did you want to, okay, about closing the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure what we're doing, because he's looking for a motion outside of the public hearing? Do we have to close the public hearing first?
We need to close the public hearing.
Okay, then I don't have anything to say on this.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and motion on the floor is close public hearing. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Jason, give us your recommendation one more time.
My recommendation is that the council affirm the decision to deny renewal of the garbage service license to Fish Garbage Service.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to affirm the denial. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Green had spoke on this, that we've continued this, and I'm not sure why, why we continued it the first time, and, and what are we talking about specifically? Why are we, we've denied their license for what reason?
Okay, let's go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mayor. When the license was originally denied, the council was required to set a hearing by ordinance. You did that. Fish Garbage Service requested a hearing sooner than the date you set, so the council agreed and rescheduled the hearing prior to the end of 2009. Before that hearing could take place, they again requested continuance, back to the original date scheduled by the council. That was January 22nd, I believe. Prior to that, Fish requested another continuance into March sometime last week, or on January 22nd, the council agreed to a two-week continuance, and that brings us to today. So, you have accommodated their request for public hearing and for rescheduling that a number of times already.
I think also part of his question, Mr. Green, was what was, on what basis was the license denied?
The, the license was denied on the basis of unfair business practices, and that basis came from information gathered as a part of a criminal investigation that's ongoing. And as the council is well aware, information that also led to the filing of civil lawsuit.
Okay.
I just have one more question, Mr. Mayor. My question for Mr. Green would be is, when did this come to the light of the city? The crim, the criminal activity? When did it come to the attention of the city?
Mr. Green?
Given the pendency of the criminal investigation, I don't believe it's appropriate to have that specific of a discussion at this point in time. We could certainly have that discussion later on, though.
And that'll be in the future after?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to uphold the denial. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for a city attorney. Jason, they've been purchased, have they not?
Jason?
Yes, they've, my understanding is that an entity called Red River Service has purchased the assets and is operating within the City of Rapid City. They have been come properly licensed. I believe they're still using the Fish Garbage Trucks, Garbage Service Trucks, so you still see them driving around. But it's not Fish Garbage Service operating them, is my understanding.
If I may, sorry, I'm a little slow. Why is Fish then requesting a hearing?
Jason?
The ordinance provides for a hearing if requested by the individual who is the subject of a denial. I believe Fish is attempting to preserve legal claims that they may attempt to assert in the future. I've informed their, their council, though, that by failing to appear here today, it's my opinion, they've procedurally defaulted on an administrative remedy. So, I think the council is also preserving its legal remedies by taking this action today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to uphold the denial of the license to Fish Garbage Service. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 79, please.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb gutter, streetlight conduit, sidewalk along one side of the street and water along the access street, as they abut a balance of Lot 3. And this property is generally described as being located at 6299 East Highway 44. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 80, please.
A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Huey Clemmons for a variance to the subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer, and pavement, and to redate, and to reduce the street surface width from 24 feet to 18 and 10 feet respectively, as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, on property located a distance of 72.19 feet more or less to the point of beginning located at 6299 East Highway 44. My motion would be for approval in part with stipulations and denial in part, as per the Planning Commission's recommendations.
We have a motion and a second to approve in part with stipulations and to deny in part, per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 81.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of sidewalk along Campbell Street, as they abut the portion of Block 1 of South Creek Industrial Park located at 2230 Campbell Street. My motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 81. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 82, please.
A request by Forefront Design Incorporated for Jim Meyer House for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, and sewer along Campbell Street, and the 30-foot access easement, to reduce the width of the access easement from 59 feet to 30 feet, and to reduce the pavement width from 26, 26 feet to 20 feet, as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code on Lot D of Block 1 of South Creek Industrial Park, located at 2230 Campbell Street. My motion is to improve in part with stipulations and deny without prejudice in part, as per the Planning Commission's recommendations, recommendation.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to approve in part with stipulations and to deny without prejudice in part, per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping that Marcia could just give us a little explanation of where the sidewalk will not be put in.
Marcia?
As you can tell from this drawing, this property abuts Campbell Street, and that is the area that is indicated it would not be installed. This is an unusual piece of property that follows the railroad tracks along its western property boundary. There's kind of a very narrow resurfaced area that provides access to this property. So, if you look at the slide there, along the western edge is really the railroad tracks and part of the rail yards that exist. I'll see if I have a picture. I may have an aerial here. And again, I think this illustrates it even better, the fact that even though this abuts Campbell Street, it does not appear to be appropriate to have a sidewalk along that western boundary, at least at this point in time. Should things change in the future related to the rail yards, it may make sense, and that's why the waiver of right to protest would preserve the city's right to install sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor, so Marcia, there's a, there's a warp in place on this, then? Is that where?
Yes, that's one of the stipulations.
Oh, okay, I, thank you.
Okay, very good. Further discussion? Motion on the floor? Yep, yeah, is to approve in part with stipulations and I, without prejudice in part, per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Correct, Marcia?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 83, please.
A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for recreational adventures for a vacation of section line highway on a portion of undeveloped section line right-of-way located in tract A of property located at 3010 East Highway 44. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 84, please.
A request by Ferber Engineering Company Incorporated for South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for a vacation of right-of-way on Dean Lane, right-of-way located in section of, in, excuse me, located a distance of 224.20 feet to the true point of beginning located west of Sturgis Road and east of North 40th Street. My motion is for approval with stipulations.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. We're dealing with item number 84. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Preston, the bill list, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill list totals $4,923,371.62. There are no additions or changes. I recommend approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list, which totals $4,923,371.62. Any discussion on that motion? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session?
Yes, for the purposes permitted by STCL-1-25-2.
Okay, can we have a motion, please? Second? Can we get, thank you. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purposes permitted by STCL-1-25-2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. So we're out of executive session. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to proceed in accordance with the, uh, discussion in executive session on the settlement of the potential litigation matter.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I'd ask the council to authorize the public works director to extend an offer to the candidate for the water production supervisor position at step G on the pay scale.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to, uh, to say that, to thank the public works director for looking inside and promoting from within. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to file with the finance officer for public, uh, access materials from outside council per the discussion in an executive session.
Second? We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one oh, no from Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach. And my apologies is, um, how do we handle, I was going to say Sam is down there, we just recognize him on these votes or not?
Yes.
Okay, affirmative, okay. Very good. Uh, go ahead. Abstain on this last motion?
Abstain on that one, yeah.
I need to make sure you, yeah, I'm sorry, Amber. Yeah, on the previous motion, just make sure, we had one no from Alderman Wyffenbach, and Alderman Quaker abstained. Okay, very good.
I believe you have another item on your agenda, I think it's item eighty-six. Is that correct?
That is correct, item eighty-six.
Uh, item eighty-six, I'll read that in, Mayor. Resolution two thousand and ten dash zero zero four, resolution of censure of all, Ward Two Alderman, Sam Quaker. It's my advice that the council continue this item to your next council meeting, that you set a public hearing on the adoption of this resolution, and that you direct the city attorney to provide notice to Alderman Quaker of the, uh, public hearing.
Okay. One clarification, are you recommending that we set the hearing at the next council meeting?
That the hearing be set to be held at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. So move. We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion?
Is there a chance for comment?
Yep, let me check here, and then Talbot will, let me check with the council, and then I'll give, uh, you the opportunity here. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none? Just a question, I actually have two speak requests for him. Sam, did you want to go first, or did you want Talbot?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and council. I have always believed that it is my responsibility as an elected official to be a voice for my constituents, respecting their First Amendment rights and exercising my own. I am being chastised for asking questions of city management on behalf of more than a dozen citizens and employees. I have done nothing to bring shame to this city or this council. I am guilty only of serving people and following up on their concerns. Since the city council does not elect me, but my constituents do, it's only fair to my constituents that they have access to all of the information surrounding this matter. I encourage people to read all the material, study the timeline, and when all the facts come out, everyone will see how contrived and ridiculous this whole thing is. Additionally, I want to point out that the record will show that a reference to, uh, a prior reprimand or prior discipline five years ago is absolutely false. I look forward to a full public hearing. This is bigger than me. This is about the responsibility and right of elected officials to ask questions. Do you really want to create a situation where elected officials are controlled in such a way that they're afraid to ask questions about the government you are paying for? I have been told to stop emailing so much and ask more questions face to face. The citizens of this community and those on this council should ask themselves why the individuals in the city, in city hall, don't want records kept of the work that we do here. The record will also show that the individual that filed the complaint in this case, the last time that I had, uh, direct contact with this individual face to face was in two thousand and three. The last email was in fall of two thousand and seven, which was actually a thank you, and then there was a carbon copy, he was on an email that I'd sent in two thousand and eight. And last fall, the issue at hand is I met with fifteen city employees. I heard their concerns. I followed through, and many of those issues that were addressed, uh, that were brought up were addressed, and the concerns specifically revolve around the fact that I had raised issues on their behalf, that, uh, a number of flyers had been thrown away, and I'd asked for the invoices. And, um, as a result of me asking questions, I'm now facing this. I look forward to a full discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zork, if you could please identify yourself for the record, and then the floor's yours, sir.
Sure, Talbot Wazorick. Many of you know me, I'm with the firm of Gunderson Palmer Nelson and Ashmore. I've known a lot of you personally, uh, through different political functions, and just through, uh, being in the community for nineteen years. I'm here tonight on, uh, behalf of Mr. Quaker. You know, it's, I'm in the uneven, and evident, and, well, I'm in a tough position. You've been in there an hour and a half. I have to tell you that, uh, I have, I have been known to the city attorney that I think that this process has been unfair. And I will tell you that I think if any of you would hear about a city employee being treated by management in the same fashion that Sam Quaker, an elected official, has been treated, that you'd be appalled. There's been numerous requests for the information. Now, I heard you did, did a resolution just on the investigation. Now, I've not read the resolution, I have not been entitled to read the resolution. I've asked, as Mr. Quaker's counsel, to read the resolution so I could address some of the legal issues, which I think are monumental in this situation, that's been refused. Now, is all the information, is the question I would have, going to be released? There's a reference, I'm told, in the resolution to, uh, a thousand pages of emailed material. As far as I know, nobody but the individual that proffered that to the investigators ever seen that. I loaned, Mr. Quaker hasn't, I have not. So what I would ask is if this council is going to have a public proceeding, that there be some process given, that there be some rights to review the accusations, that there be rights to review the materials that this supposed censure is being based on. Because all I know right now, all I know right now, is that contact by a city councilman with management officials in the city is going to result in a censure of that councilman. So I, I have to tell you that to think how this started, I want this council to know that what we have seen is the original complaint, and that's it. I want this council to know what the investigator said when he met with Mr. Quaker, I was there, is that he thought the only thing surrounding, uh, any issues was what occurred in September. And what occurred in September is, as Mr. Quaker just set forth, he met with individuals. He's entitled to do that as a councilman. He raised an issue they brought up. He's entitled to do that as a councilman. He raised it in an email and followed it up in a public meeting. He's entitled to do that as a councilman. Under the Constitution, he's entitled to do that. Nobody gavelled him down. He didn't get irate. He didn't use obscenities. He asked questions. I have to admit that I can't say that I've seen everything, because every time I've raised an issue and pushed on an issue, I've been told I haven't been able to see everything, so I don't really understand what's going on. But that makes a pretty tough case for a lawyer and a councilman to respond to. I am also surprised that the implication being that there's going to be a conclusion, there was punishment doled out in two thousand and five. I was assisting Mr. Quaker back then, I advised him then. The council didn't have the power to punish him because it was a constitutional right for him to question, uh, officer of the city. I was never informed of it. I'm informed by the city attorney, there's no documentation of that, in that you're going to put a conclusion, a conclusion in a resolution that you're going to publish tomorrow that such occurred. I don't know how this proceeding is going to go. You have no established procedures. Your code of conduct is incredibly vague. Under state law, you can only punish for disorderly conduct. I don't see any disorderly conduct. Under the U.S. Constitution, you can't punish an elected official for asking questions. So I look forward to this procedure, and I look forward to the revealing of everything that this council is going to base a potential resolution on with adequate time that it can be addressed. And I look forward to established procedure where some questions can be asked and issues raised. And I would ask that the council also look at releasing all the information on two thousand and five, if the council is going to make that conclusion that there was punishment doled out. I have nothing else. If any councilman has a question of me, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Zork. Jason, repeat the motion on the floor, just for clarification, if you would, please.
The motion is to continue the resolution, to set a public hearing to be held at the next city council meeting on the resolution, and to direct the city attorney to provide notice of the public hearing to Mr. Quaker.
Very good. Further discussion on that motion? And, Jason, would be appropriate to say that, uh, what we're doing today is basically continuing and setting a hearing? Okay. So, uh, with that, please keep that in mind. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Um, I appreciate everything I've heard from the, um, side of Mr. Quaker and Mr. Quaker today. But I have to tell you too, um, what's the rights of employees on a tough case? We didn't hear from this employee at all. He just filed a grievance. What's the rights of the employee, sir?
Are you asking for a response to this rhetorical question?
No. I would ask, I would ask you to come back with a response on an open meeting. Process in which employees are treated, when a per, established procedure has never probably been preceded, because this is a case that's never happened enough to city council before in Rapid City. Code of conduct was part of what Mr. Quaker put forth from the last case. So let me ask you, when this comes forward, ask yourself these questions, sir.
Jason, my apologies, Deb.
Thank you.
Jason's shaking his head over there. Help me out here, Jason.
This is not the public hearing on the matter. The public hearing is being set. That's the appropriate time for Mr. Wazorick, Mr. Quaker, to make the public statement and for the council to ask questions. I think it needs to wait until that time to give everyone fair opportunity to, to be heard.
Okay. Okay. There again, motion on the floor, as stated, is to continue this item and establish, and set the hearing from two weeks from tonight. I, no, I, that's correct. Yep, and to give notice to Alderman Quaker. Okay. Everyone clear in the motion? I'm sorry, is it the sixteenth? Let's make sure we have the right date. Sixteenth, because we actually have President's Day on the fifteenth. So it'll be, the date of the hearing will be on, at the council meeting on the sixteenth. Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, um, I'll tell you what, let's, I think we have it. Motion passes with Alderman, uh, Wyffenbach voting no, and Alderman Quaker abstaining. Is that correct? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. Anything else, Mr. Green? Look for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.